I would like to call to order the Oregon City Council Regular Meeting for January 13th, 2025. The time is 7:01. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Rossen, would you please take a roll call of council members present?
Mrs. Ackerman?
Here.
Mr. Drake?
Here.
Mr. Horniac?
Here.
Mrs. Paula?
Here.
Mr. Reeves?
Here.
Mr. Salander?
Here.
Mr. Wallensack?
Here.
Thank you, Cassie. Also present at tonight's meeting is Mayor Michael T. Seferian, City Administrator Joel Mezier, Clerk of Council Cassie Rossen, Law Director Melissa Pora, Public Service Director Paul Roman, Police Chief Brandon Began, Assistant Police Chief Ryan Spangler, Fire Chief Clayton O'Brien, Assistant Fire Chief Mark Mullins, and Finance Director Nick Roman. Our next order of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the December 16th, 2024, regular council meeting, and the January 6th, 2025, special meeting, and the January 6th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Horniac?
I move for passage or approval of the minutes of the December 16th regular, the January 6th, 2025 special, and the January 6th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Horniac. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Drake. Thank you. Does anyone have any objections? Meeting minutes are accepted as presented. The first item on the agenda is persons and delegations. We have two that have signed in. Mr. Lambright, if you would please come up and give your name and address for the record.
Tom Lambright, 5238 Seaman Road. I'm here to address the issues with the OEDF and the way things have been handled the last few meetings. I really feel that things were handled pretty unprofessionally on your guys' end. You know, Mr. Mayor, you accused the guy, Mr. Henning, for grandstanding. You made a comment that, apparently you made a comment that he was unstable. You know, those things are, this isn't a place for that kind of stuff. He has a grievance, an issue with what's going on that has to do with the city that maybe they need to be addressed, maybe they don't need to be addressed. But as a citizen, he has the right to come up here and address you, and he addressed you in a professional manner. Didn't get personal. You took it to the next level, Mike. I'm sorry to bring this up, but you know, I sit here week after week, and I watch your reactions when people that you may not care for get up here. I see your facial expressions. You're talking to Joel. You know, maybe you're asking him questions about what's going on. I don't know, but it's, to me, what's going, and I'm sorry for the attack, but to me, I feel that you're attacking this guy for issues that he brought up that seem to be somewhat legitimate.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to address a couple of those things. First off, I never said he was unstable.
Beth Ackerman brought that up. I apologize. I heard that that was one of the comments you said. Okay.
That, Beth brought that up.
I didn't hear it from Beth. I heard it from other people, but that's fine.
No, that is, so that is not true. I said if you are offended by something...
But I apologize. I take that back. I'm sorry.
All right. And what was the other thing you said? I said he was grand. He's the one who brought up grandstanding.
No, you brought it up first and then you come back.
No, he didn't. He brought it up, and I said, I don't think I was one grandstanding. So you might want to, you might want to go back and watch it.
I'll go back and watch it.
Come on, go back and watch it because you were consistent. Everything you said was inaccurate.
Well, I apologize if that was inaccurate. You know, and then the other thing that, you know, the first time that I seen him address the board, he talked about X number dollars that were missing or not accounted for, or what it was. You had nothing to say at that point. In the article that was in the, in the paper, you came out and said 300,000. It's more like 300,000, something to that effect. Okay? So whether it's 900,000, 300,000, 20...
300,000 for what?
Well, I'm just saying that's what you, that was a comment that you made in one of the Blade articles when they said, you said it was more like 300,000.
I'm sure that was not the case either, but you're consistent.
I just read it today.
You're, all right.
Okay. And then?
We will address that today.
Okay.
All right.
All right. I mean, I'm not picking on you. It's for the whole body. You know, things, when people come up here and dress this body, they need to be, they need to be addressed with respect.
They need to be what?
With respect. Whether you like what they're saying or not is not the issue.
Okay.
As citizens here, we have the right to come up and address you with our grievances, whether you like to hear it or not. And I, and I get it. You guys have a tough job. It's, you know, you hear it all day long. And then you got to come here on Mondays, and people come in here, and it's the same thing. But to that one person, that issue is golden. Maybe to you, it's not.
I just address them with the facts.
Right. Well, you know, and then the other thing is, which really caught me is I was reading the one article that, oh, in there that, you know, they tried, whoever this girl, Mary Gregory, is who did some, was a consultant for the OEDF, quote, "Oregon didn't enforce its contract, and the Oregon Economic Development Foundation Board of Directors failed in its fundamental oversight duty." Okay? And it's talking about where the city didn't request the audits that they were supposed to get, or the financial paperwork.
We definitely did request it. That's why...
I think this is prior. They said for years you didn't get the paperwork. Now, on that issue, it's not, when you have a contract, it's not your job to make sure they get you that paperwork. It's their job to make sure you get it. So for them to throw the blame on you, that's ridiculous. That's just passing the buck. So, you know, and the financial stuff, I'm iffy, iffy on. I'm not going to go there.
Well, we will.
So what, what is the issue? Are they going to start giving you that paperwork annually, biannually?
We have it all. We have every bit of it.
Okay. All right.
We have every bit of it, and, and I guess it is up to, it was up to us to request it, but when we didn't get it, we chose to not pay them for their services, which we held up and said, well, until you, until we receive that, to our expectation, you won't get it.
So how many, how many years went by that you didn't get the paperwork? You didn't get the financial paperwork that they were supposed to contractually provide you?
It was '23 and '24.
All right. Mr. Roman?
Mr. President.
Or Mr.?
The years where we were contractually, or where they were contractually obligated to get us the financial statements were '22 and '23.
So that just goes back to '22. That doesn't go back to '93 when it was formed?
No, that, correct, what you just said. There were a couple of years, I don't know the exact years, but the first year that they weren't obligated to again was 2017. So from 2017 to 2021, they were not contractually obligated to provide us with the financial statements.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Mike, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to, like, it was attacking you, but these are the things. You addressed the issue, and I just, me personally, I just thought that it was more...
Sometimes when people come up here and have, make accusations, when we know the facts and what they're saying isn't correct.
Right.
We'll stand by the facts, and I'll always stand by that. If it comes off, it might come off as stern. I don't think it's disrespectful to tell the truth, and that's what we'll continue to do.
I agree, but you, you come across as very arrogant at times.
In your opinion? I can't, I can't establish what your opinion is, but I will come across as, as very factual.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambright. Next on the persons of delegation that have signed in, PJ Caphammer. PJ, please state your name and address for the record.
PJ Caphammer, 3646 Navarre Avenue, Oregon, Ohio.
Thank you.
I guess I'll play into this game too. So I agree, Tom, but respect. As a citizen of Oregon and a business owner, you would hope that you're getting respected when you're up here. The OEDF and the whole scenario from last week. Wow, I'm in. I'm in. What we're talking about last week and disrespect and everything else, right? Beth did that to me, said I'm under investigation. But I mean, but...
We cannot be bantering back and forth.
I don't get the respect. I don't, I don't get the respect, even though I'm a citizen of Oregon and a business owner too. I understand. That's her right. She can talk down to me or say I'm under police investig, or investigate, fake investigation. You know, there's, there's a million things you can do up here. That's fine. Maybe I can help simplify it, from my understanding. OEDF, separate entity. Separate business, separate of anything. Anyone coming here with an issue with OEDF wouldn't get any answers from Oregon City Council or Administration because you're not in charge of OEDF. They're their own entity. You're also bound, though, if you do know some details or why, I don't know the person, I don't know why he was let go, or if he was let go, or he was fired, or resigned. You can't speak on that matter. He's protected, even through his dealings with OEDF. I think the big problem is, is certain people in, up here want to paint a picture of something not being done right with OEDF and the city of Oregon. If we go to the big picture, this is, this process has been going on for years. You're really close, from my understanding, to a multi-billion dollar data center coming to Oregon, which would generate hundreds of millions of dollars in tax revenue for the city of Oregon, and more importantly, in my opinion, the schools. I, I don't know the parameters of that or what you're dealing with, but I believe by coming here and listening, you guys are really close to ink in a deal that could change the whole city dynamics. When you have certain members on council who are throwing wrenches into it and getting wound up and causing a stir, I can tell you this. I'm not a member of OEDF. I could be if I wanted to. Most people could join if, especially if you have a business here. But I do know who are members. You're dealing with the elite of the elite in Oregon. Almost every bank, the refineries, all the trades, the school, every person who cares about the city and the growth of the city is part of OEDF. I don't know if that's the greatest avenue to chase and say there's basically almost like stealing money. I will quote the Blade article. Counselwoman Beth Ackerman said, "There's a lot of mystery thrown in OEDF." And she said not, not know much about it. She doesn't know much about OEDF. "There's over a million dollars going out at a time to buy parcels of land. Any revelation on how it operates is appreciated by myself and taxpayers." So you're basically going in public and saying, "Well, there's a million dollars left. I don't understand anything about it, and no one's told us." I'm, I'm really certain Steve Horniac has probably hundreds of hours on council as the past president dealing with OEDF. You could probably go to him and get about any answer about how it operates. And I'm real positive, I could ask Steve, and he could tell me every inch of how OEDF works. I'm also real positive there's no missing money. The president of the refinery, or St. Charles, or Bay Park, or Genoa Bank, where you work, has, doesn't need to steal money. They're not doing it for this reason. When you portray it that way, though, you get everybody spinning like taxpayer dollars are lost, or they're stealing money, or you have no control. OEDF's separate from your entity. You're working in conjunction with each other. You give them a stipend or whatever money you give them every year, and it goes towards the end goal, which OEDF's end goal is, to prosper and for things to prosper and for the city to grow. I think that's most of your goals too. As for the respect factor, I think it's comical that Mr. Salamander is offended, deeply offended, but respect, when, when the mayor says something. But when Beth Ackerman's telling the whole city, and it's in a paper, that I'm under investigation like I'm a criminal investigation, he wasn't deeply offended. When she attacks, he's not deeply offended. But that's his, that's his pride. I mean, to me, I think it's a joke, but OEDF is separate from the city of Oregon. But I guarantee you, and I trust Steve Horniac's part was part of that. You're listed on the website, and so was Mr. Mezier, Mr. Seferian. I trust that this is moving forward because it's going to benefit the whole city. These two probably don't want that to happen, but that's fine. Steve, you can call your boss, Marty Sutter. Oh, no, no, just let me, I have a right to speak, and he can say whatever he wants afterwards. Well, he's a member of it. He's a member of OEDF. Well, you can call him and find out if something's happening. There is no point order.
Stop. PJ, we need to stop.
For what? Do I have not a right to address us?
Yeah, so please do not say who his employer is.
They're members of OEDF.
I understand that. We, we all understand that.
So I mean, but it's not being said.
Mr. President, since my name was mentioned...
But I'm not done speaking. Don't let them interrupt me, please.
Hang on a second. Okay. He's dropped. So, okay. PJ, please continue, but please do not state people's employment.
I won't. Thank you. Once again, this is how it works. You guys have the floor. You have time at the end where you guys had 35 minutes last meeting. You get to have that opportunity. This is my only opportunity, so I don't want to go back and forth with them. I don't want to, listen, I know they're going to play the victim afterwards. They'll probably talk badly about me. Mr. Salamander will not be offended because he's okay with it.
Mr. Caphammer, it's Salander, please. Thank you. I, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Whatever his name is. They do it one way and get away with it, but if somebody else even, then they want to play the victim. He's offended. She can't believe you're talking. They do it all the time. They literally told the whole city, "I'm under investigation," a fake investigation, apparently, "who, we've already served you papers. My attorneys already served the city. She hasn't complied with any of it. You're about a week away from me suing the city because she and him are not complying with the public information request." So it is what it is, and I fully understand. I'm not mad. I'm not waiting for them out of the parking lot. They can play the victim. I'm okay with it. They're trying to blow up this deal. OEDF, you're talking about President Bay Park, President St. Charles, the president of the banks. You're talking about the biggest, most important people in the city who are working hard to get this done for our city to prosper. There's no point in it. Go ahead, victims. I'll be the bad guy. Talk badly. I'm okay. I won't be offended. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Caphammer.
Mr. Caphammer, you, you said that you're a man of your word. You stand behind your words. What am I?
Point order.
Excuse me? What am I?
I'm not, I'm not talking hurt.
Oh, okay. Mr. President.
Counsel, no, we are finished.
No. Mr. President.
Yes, exactly.
Mr. President, the mayor got to respond.
We are going to continue with our tonight's...
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate it.
The mayor got to respond when his name was, when he was directed.
Please.
No, Miss...
No, we need to stop. We need to stop.
You're in charge of the meeting, and you didn't give her the floor.
Okay, Mr. Reeves, do it your way.
Thank you.
Do it your way, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you. We need to, first thing is, we need to add item 107 of 2025 to tonight's agenda. Oh, 007 to tonight's agenda. Can I seek the motion to add this item to the agenda?
Mr. President?
Ms. Paula?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Horniac. We have a motion by Ms. Paula, second by Mr. Horniac. Counsel, are there any objections? Hearing none, item 007 of 2025 has been added to tonight's agenda. The first item on the agenda for this evening is item number 001 of 2025. Mayor, is there anything else to add to that?
No, as a matter of fact, besides for the one that we added to the agenda, we're staying pat.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions for item 001 of 2025? Hearing none, I will seek item 001 of 2025 as ordinance 001 of 2025, and ask Ms. Rossen to read it into the record.
Authorizing the city administrator, director of public service, chief of police, fire chief, commissioner of parks and recreation, commissioner of building and zoning inspection, finance director, and other municipal administrators, subject to the written authorization of the mayor, to take bids on equipment, materials, supplies, maintenance agreements, and insurance from time to time without the requirements for further legislation to be adopted by city council and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Wallensack?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance number one of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Paula. We have a motion by Mr. Wallensack, second by Ms. Paula. Ms. Rossen, will you please take a roll call of counsel?
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Mrs. Paula?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 101, 001 of 2025 does pass with a vote of seven yays and zero nays. The next item on the agenda is item number 002 of 2025. Counsel, any questions? Thank you. I will assign item 002 of 2025 as ordinance 002 of 2025, and ask Ms. Rossen to read it into the record.
Authorizing the mayor, finance director, and director of public service to issue purchase orders to PVS Chemicals 10900, Harper Avenue, Detroit, Michigan, for the purchase of liquid ferroschloride for the wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Rossen. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Paula.
I move for passage of ordinance 002 of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wallensack. We have a motion by Ms. Paula, second by Mr. Wallensack. Ms. Rossen, would you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mrs. Paula?
Yes.
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 002 of 2025 does pass with a vote of seven yays and zero nays. The next item on the agenda is item 003 of 2025. All these were presented last year, or last, last week except number seven. So, Counsel, is there any questions about 003 2025? Hearing none, I will seek to, I will assign item 003 of 2025 as ordinance 003 of 2025, and ask Ms. Rossen to please read it into the record.
Authorizing the mayor, finance director, and director of public service to issue purchase orders to SNF Polydine One Chemical Plant Road, Riceboro, Georgia, for the purchase of the chloro, or chloro, excuse me, C6266, a de-watering polymer for the wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Rossen. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Salander?
I'd like to make a motion for passage of item, excuse me, ordinance 003 of 2025 and declaring emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Salander. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Paula. We have a motion by Mr. Salander, second by Ms. Paula. Ms. Rossen, would you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mr. Salander?
Yes.
Mrs. Paula?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 003 of 2025 does pass with a vote of seven yays and zero nays. The next item on the agenda is item 004 of 2025. Counsel, are there any questions? Hearing none, I will assign item 004 of 2025 as ordinance 004 of 2025, and ask Ms. Rossen to please read it into the record.
Authorizing the mayor, finance director, and director of public service to enter into an agreement with Louisville Title Agency for Northwest Ohio Inc., trustee and premises 2924 Navarre LLC and Bennett Enterprises LLC for right of entry for the LUCSR 2-21.72 Navarre Avenue Safety Improvement Project, PID 118234, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Rossen. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Horniac?
I move for passage of ordinance four of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. Salander? Oh, Mr. Drake, I'm sorry. We have a motion by Mr. Horniac, a second by Mr. Drake. Ms. Rossen, would you please take a roll call of counsel, a roll call vote of counsel?
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Paula?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yes.
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance passes seven yays, zero nays. The next item on the agenda is item number 005 of 2025. Counsel, are there any questions on item 005 of 2025? Hearing none, I will assign item 005 of 2025 as ordinance 005 of 2025, and ask Ms. Rossen to please read it into the record.
Authorizing the mayor, finance director, and chief of police to enter into an agreement with Owens Community College Center for Law Enforcement and Professional Development Training to provide training consortium membership to the Oregon Police Division and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Paula.
I move for passage of 005 of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Salander. We have a motion by Ms. Paula, second by Mr. Salander. Ms. Rossen, would you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mrs. Paula?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 005 of 2025 does pass with a vote of seven yays, zero nays. The next item on the agenda is item number 006 of 2025. Counsel, are there any questions on item 006 of 2025?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms...
I just, is it okay? Can we ask if there's anybody in the audience that is here because maybe they don't know that they had an opportunity to speak to that? Because we asked for other residents to come in that were in favor or against it. Just meant to make sure that either some folks I...
You're talking about the ordinance that we're talking about. Yes, that's, that's quite all right. Is there anybody here that, that would like to speak for it or against it? Okay, with nobody stepping up or asking, Counsel, are there any other questions on item 006 of 2025? Hearing none, I will assign 006 of 2025 as ordinance 006 of 2025, and ask Ms. Rossen to please read it into the record.
Leaving special assessments for the improvement of the north side of Brown Road from approximately 422 feet east of Coy Road to approximately 1,079 feet east of Coy Road by the installation of a sanitary sewer, including necessary street restoration and resurfacing, and other necessary pertinences in conformity with the specifications for such improvement on file with the director of public service and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Rossen. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Wallensack?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance number 006 of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Horniac, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Wallensack, second by Mr. Horniac. Ms. Rossen, would you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Paula?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 006 of 2025 does pass with a vote of seven yays and zero nays. The next item on the agenda is item 007, presented by Mayor Seferian and City Administrator Mr. Mezier. Mr. Mezier?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel. So this ordinance would authorize the city to sell the property on the corner of Pickle and Creusius. It's a small residential lot that was a nuisance property last year. We went through the process of clearing the title, cleaning the property. We got it in our possession, and, you know, we went through all of the requisite procedures that we needed to in order to sell the property. order to, uh, sell the property, uh, by statute, um, which is actually a pretty vigorous process. So we advertised it in the newspaper for five straight weeks. We put up signs in the yard and, and did everything we could. But, um, you know, because, you know, it's all location, location, location. So it is right across from the refinery. Uh, one of the neighbors actually did submit a bid. We're grateful that we actually did get one. Um, it's a thousand dollars. Uh, I know it seems cheap, but we did go through the whole pro, the bidding process. Uh, they put in a bid for a thousand dollars. So we would sell the property for a thousand. Uh, it's one of the neighbors. And, uh, like I said, it was a nuisance property last year. Um, I think the neighbors would be grateful to have somebody mowing it so it doesn't turn into a nuisance again this year. So, um, other than that, that's all I have, and I'll take any questions.
Counsel. Hearing no questions, uh, I will assign item 007 of 2025 as ordinance 007 of 2025 and ask Ms. Ross and to please read it into the record.
Authorizing the mayor and finance director to enter into a purchase agreement for the sale of city-owned property in, in R2 Medium Density Residential Zone District, known as parcel number 4464274, and located at 2275 Pickle Road in the City of Oregon, declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Ross and. Uh, counsel.
Mr. President.
Mr. Horniac.
I move for passage of ordinance 007 of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Mr. Horniac. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wallensack. We have a motion by Mr. Horniac, second by Mr. Mr. Wallensack. Ms. Ross, would you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 007 of 2025 does pass with a vote of seven yays, zero nays. Um, that concludes our items for passage this evening. Um, before we go to the, uh, our standing committee votes or, um, reports, we up here have to be held to a higher standard for, uh, um, what we say, what we do. It's getting, uh, pretty, um, disappointing when we have people saying things that end up not being what they should be. We are not up here to argue amongst us up here. We are here to do the people's work. This is a business meeting. This isn't where we try to air out our dirty laundry when we don't, there's, um, or what we perceive to be dirty laundry. We need to, um, start making this a better place for our citizens to come in and feel like they're not being threatened or, uh, looked at wrong or whatever. This stuff that we're going back and forth with, with our own hidden agendas, and some of it's not hidden, that's gotta stop. We are here now, we're going through to give our reports. Our reports are on our standing committee or something positive, I would think, that has happened in the city that you want to talk about and that you want to bring forward. We shouldn't be doing the negative things and trying to call out somebody because we don't like them or somebody because we don't like that. We don't like what's going on. That's not what this is about. This is a business meeting. We are here to do the work of the people. With that being said, we will now move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. And counsel, you got correspondence through the fire department, and it is of a retirement resignation, uh, and that is of Keith Henninger, uh, effective January 25th, 2025. Keith has served the Oregon Fire Department for the last eight years. Keith is present. We want to thank him for this service. Uh, the, the fire department, we you know, has changed and evolved in, in a way, and it's become difficult for people to serve at as the paid-on-call rank, and I think Keith found himself in that condition. But we do, I'd like to honor his request and thank him for his years of service. And so I'd ask counsel's concurrence in accepting the retirement resignation of Keith Henninger January 25th, 2025.
Counsel.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Pauloff.
I move to concur with the mayor's acceptance of the resignation of Keith Henninger, effective January 25th, 2025.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Salander. Uh, mayor, counsel concurs.
Any objection?
Are there any objections? Counsel concurs.
Keith, you have, you want to say anything? You're here for that? All right. Okay. And, and, uh, just to add something positive to, uh, to my report, we did meet with, uh, the Oregon Economic Development Foundation today. It was Mr. Mazur, myself, and Nick Roman. Um, and what we did was, um, we had ledgers showed all of the, um, incoming money to their land account and all the expenditures. And I'll have Nick Roman, uh, just tell you what are, what we come up with as we went down each of the items and identified them and what end up balancing. Uh, so if you go to Nick, uh.
Mr. Nick Roman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so they provided us with a transaction report of all transactions from January 1st of 2022 through, uh, December 31st of 2024. Um, going off the records that we had for what they had in the accounts on January 1st of 2022, it balances out to the penny for the expenditures and income that came into the foundation and the city's land account. Um, that dollar amount at the end of the year was 206,000 and some odd dollars. I can give the number if we need it exactly, but that, uh, is after all expenditures and purchases of land.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, anything to add?
And, and just, just with that is, that's, that's good news. Everything. And, and the only thing that, that was wrong and that it took us, it took us a little long, a little bit of lengthy time to get it, but when we did get it, and, and we had to push pretty hard digging them in. In fact, uh, we were working on it, um, Mr. Mazur, nice Sunday, uh, to get them to say we, we do need all of that stuff here Monday. And they did show up, and they showed up when they said they would, and they had all the, uh, documents and the backup for it. So, um, that's, that was the good news. The bad news is now we gotta pay them the hundred thousand dollars. And with that, I would end my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mazur.
Thank you, Mr.
Oh, oh, one, one other thing is, is that, um, uh, the members of the Oregon Economic Development Foundation will be here at our next regular council meeting, which is 27th? Yeah, they will be here, uh, with many of their members, um, to, um, to, to speak to counsel and, um, explain, uh, or answer the questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mazur.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and, uh, one other item is that, um, there is a, uh, that, that transaction report, I think they said they were gonna provide us with. We, we had asked for more detail in it. Um, but they also want to be protective of, uh, certain things that pertain to individuals. So, uh, you know, for their, for discretionary purposes for, uh, you know, businesses that they do dealings with or property owners that they do dealings with. So. Anonymity. Anonymity. They want to, and the, the people that they deal with want anonymity. So that, that's, uh, that's one last thing, uh, to touch on that. And I do have some, a few items here, but I wanted to touch on one thing that had to do with the, uh, the article that you mentioned, Mr. Lambrecht. Uh, that was a Blade editorial, and, um, I didn't, um, I didn't much care for some of the things that were written in it. Um, but it is an editorial. It's an opinion piece. Um, the, in, in the opinion that they said that there were, there, there was, uh, and I'll quote it here, slipshod oversight, uh, by the city of Oregon. Um, and I, I personally take offense to that because I feel like we were that oversight. We didn't pay them, uh, for the hundred thousand dollars. We pushed them to get the financial reports. We, we were, we were the drivers of that. And, and that's where, and then when they bring up the 1.7 million dollars, um, of, from the Foundation for Land Purchases, we, we know where that is because the land was purchased, just like what, like the city said, and the OEDF said they were going to do. So, and I know you're not supposed to mess with people that buy ink by the barrels, and I get all that, but there's a lot of editorial or opinion in here that's, um, in my opinion, is false, is false in this article. So I don't know where they got a lot of this information from, but that, that, and the editorial piece was not, there's a lot of inaccuracies in it. So I just wanted to make sure that, for everybody's sake, that we know that, that's, there, there are a lot of things in here. If anybody wants to go into more detail on that, I'd be happy to talk to them about it. Um, and, uh, one thing, before I go any further, uh, I was asked by, uh, members of counsel to ask Chief Beegan to give an update on the incident that occurred at Circle K today. So, uh, Mr. President, if it's okay, can?
Thank you.
Can you turn it over to Chief Beegan?
Chief Beegan.
Mr. President, um, a little before 6:00 PM, we were called over to the Circle K, um, on Star Avenue, uh, with a report of two victims with gunshots. Um, our road patrol crews, our fire department responded and assisted, uh, those individuals. Um, the shooting, from what we understand of it, took place in East Toledo, and the victims then drove into the city of Oregon and ended up at the Circle K location. So it wasn't an incident, uh, that took place in Oregon. They just happened to go there and receive the medical care that we could for them.
Thank you, chief, and thanks to the fire department as well. Um, Mr. Mazur, anything else?
Yes. Um, just a, a couple of updates. Um, on the sheets, uh, was informed today that they, uh, will be mobilizing this week in hopes of even maybe starting demolition this week, if not next week. Um, that was the latest. Uh, they, they were held up by, uh, they needed to secure an easement from neighboring properties. So, uh, that's what held that up. Um, so that is still planned. Um, the, uh, town center plans, the, the drawings and the architectural review committee, I know that's gonna be coming up. Oh, Councilman Horniac's on that and, uh, and some others. Um, uh, within the next 30 to 60 days, we're anticipating, uh, getting some plans from them. So we'll be able to review that, uh, have that meeting, and then hopefully, uh, they'll be able to start, and they are still planning on breaking ground in the spring. So, on that, um, one thing I wanted to mention is that, uh, next week is, uh, is a holiday.
Right.
Uh, Martin Luther King Holiday, and, um, the committee of the whole meeting would be scheduled, uh, on that Tuesday. I don't know that we'll have enough legislation, uh, to, to have its, you know, we'll, 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 we'll come up with it. We'll talk with you, but, uh, if it is scheduled, it'd be on that Tuesday. Um, but one item that, um, I'd, I'd like to, uh, for consideration of city council would be, um, there is a resolution. There's this, uh, uh, a thing out there called the America 250, uh, and that's the, um, uh, United States 250th Anniversary. That's, uh, July 4th of 2026. Uh, I know we're a year ahead, but, um, if we declare ourselves, uh, an America 250 city, uh, that would, um, allow us to apply for grants under some programs that the federal government is rolling out. So, um, the, some of the applications are due by January 31st. We, they're $5,000 grants. Um, you know, pretty easy to put together. We're looking at a couple of projects, uh, maybe a tree planting project. I know the dog park has requested, uh, uh, some tree plantings around, uh, around there. Um, and, uh, possibly something with the Oregon Jerusalem Historical Society, since they have their project going on, and, uh, they have, there's a lot more work that needs to be done in the, in the building. So, um, those are a couple of items, but that, I just wanted everybody to know that we're planning on bringing that forward at the next city council meeting in the, in case that we don't have a, uh, committee of the whole meeting next week. Um, and that is all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mazur. Ms. Papora.
Just wanted to thank Mr. Henninger, Henninger for his service and no report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Roman.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Mr. Horniac.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Horniac. Ms. Pauloff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. Um, I just, um, before I make this, um, set this, um, meeting, I wanted to ask Ms. Ross and, um, would it be okay to do it on that date? Did you clarify, Ms. Ross and? Did you clarify for the 27th?
Yes, Mrs. Pauloff. It looks like we may be moving, um, the other committee meeting to February 10th, I believe.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So then I would like to, um, set a safety committee meeting for Monday, January 27th at 6 o'clock, and this is to discuss the flock camera system for the police, and there is an update from the fire department. And that's it for my report.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff. Um, Mr. Wallensack.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report from my committee this evening.
Thank you, sir. Um, Ms. Ackerman.
I am waiting to know what the outcome of the public meeting, what the EPA is planning on doing with the expansion, or it's not the having liquids, um, and solidifying the liquids on site, um, at, at their facility. And I, I am looking forward for, to information on the water trunk line. I understand that's, uh, in motion, the 78-inch Toledo trunk line. Um, I'm hoping you guys will keep us all informed on that. Everybody's on that committee. Um, and, and I consider it to be part of the environmental too because of its proximity to the hazardous waste landfill. Um, I would say I, I, I do appreciate you trying to get a handle on things, Mr. Reeves, uh, Mr. President. Uh, I, I wish that that would have happened two years ago and even last year, but, um, that I do, I do appreciate. Uh, it is, it is the time that everyone in the city of Oregon knows that the intimidation that has been, that has plagued our council, the intimidation of citizens that want to get up and speak. Um, I, I do disagree. I think, I believe in free speech. If people want to get up and they want to talk about whatever it is they want to talk about, this is their only forum to address our city, our council. This is not just a business meeting. Um, we have people that, you know, come in and they're excited about the things and the quality of life and in Oregon, and we want them to share those things. Um, but I, I do want, you know, it is intimidation, the, the intimidation of people is, is done. It's over. No one's gonna tolerate it. I believe no one else here on this, uh, up here is gonna tolerate it anymore. Um, I don't know about everybody else, but I've been called terrible, horrible names. I've been threatened. I've had people say they're going to do horrible things to me as, as well as some of you have up here, uh, on social media and, and standing right here and in these hallways. Um, it's not to be tolerated anymore. Uh, as far as the OEDF, I think that's great that you got your paperwork finally. Um, I, I do think, you know, based on the multiple times that, oh, and for the record, the OEDF is not a separate entity. We have three people that, uh, the mayor, um, Mr. Mazur, and Steve Horniac are representatives of our city to the OEDF. Um, unless you're, and it would mean a lot more if somebody's a member of the OEDF and, um, before they have such a strong opinion about it. But, um, there's multiple times where I've checked the OEDF website. This is from 23, and this is just one part. These are parcels that were placed for sale, and then the owners didn't even know about it, and they were opposed to it. So we, we have some sloppiness going on, and I'm hoping with, I don't even know if we're gonna continue. Do we give them the hundred thousand? Because there's a lot of talk about whether you're even gonna continue to have an OEDF. Does it, has it, uh, does it have a purpose anymore? I've heard that, I've heard that thrown about. So do we hold the hundred thousand in an escrow type situation till you determine if there's a future for the OEDF? I mean, I just, a lot of questions, and the only place I can ask them is here. So, um, but there's, as I've told Mr. Mazur over the last couple of years, the website, uh, for the money that we give them, and it's taxpayer dollars. So I believe that we have a right, we have a right to know things like, did you, did the officers of OEDF supply all of the things that, you know, their 990 says that they did to their employees, um, to their officers as a 501(c)(6). You know, are they doing, are they, are they taking our money and using it wisely? It's not just about the transactions. It's being accountable to the state, the feds, and to the city, to taxpayers, what they do with that hundred thousand dollars, not to mention the millions of dollars we voted to give them to purchase properties. So, um, I, I will say, and on behalf of Mr. Salander and I, to say that we're opposed to businesses succeeding in Oregon. Um, I think the mayor's word is for that is delusional. I think the mayor's word for that is delusional. But I I'm just going to, I I agree, you know, it seems to be that the shutdown comes when it's me getting to defend myself against being called horrible things or being threatened. I am not, you can get up and say anything you want, as long as you don't threaten hurt anybody. That's free speech. This is not just a business meeting. I know you guys would like to think so, but we cover too many things about our daily lives outside of spending money to to say that. So if, Mr. President, if you're going to run meetings where you don't tolerate personal insults, threats, intimidation by people attending the meeting or behind this desk, I will greatly appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. Just to touch base, I never said that the citizens couldn't come up and speak. And that's what it sounded like you brought up at first. The citizens are more than welcome to come in. I look forward to them coming in and speaking. It's not, it's not that. I'm saying it's a business meeting for us, and we're not going to, we're not, I'm not, I will not tolerate the bantering back and forth. With that being said, Mr. Salander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing from my standing committee, just a couple of quick things. First of all, Mr. Henninger, thank you. Appreciate your service towards the city and the Fire Department as well as the streets. Very much appreciate you. So thank you. I also wanted to to thank Chief Beegan and American Red Cross and anyone else who had anything to do with the the blood drive. You as well, Joe, on the blood drive. Thank you so much for that. And it was, it was very well done by everybody, and then I went very smoothly. So and it sounded like it did really well, too. So good. So they're looking forward to the next one on May 7. Okay, all right. Thank you. And just lastly, I'll make it quick, but asking questions about things or just wanting clarification or even if it's requesting an audit, it's not, I know it's being played off as being a bad thing or that it's negative or what have you. But I mean, if I have questions and it's taken it that way or it brings up somebody who wants to, you know, you spell my name or say my name differently, that's that's fine. It doesn't bother me. It's been, I've been dealing with that since I was five years old, so having another, having five-year-old insults, I can deal with it. But anyway, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salander. Mr. Drake.
No report from any of my committees. I just want to make an announcement for the drainage roads, buildings, and lands. I want to hold a meeting February 10 at 5:45. I don't know if you need the details, President, or no.
Just a topic. You just need a topic.
Just the topic.
Okay, I know I talked to Terry earlier, and the topic is mowing grass. I guess they kind of declare where the farmers live.
Well.
I call it the eastern incredible.
Well, it's it's property owners.
Property owners. Mowing grass.
And the right of way.
And the right of ways. So I just wanted to bring that up. That'll be the main topic. And I'd also like to, Joel, I'm not trying to disrespect you, thank the police department, too. You mentioned fire. I caught, you didn't say police, but I know it was just a brain freeze. And also, I'd like to bring up, it's been a while ago since I talked to Joel, and I've had some issues where I've been tied up. And I got a call from Joel the other day that he's meeting with the U.S. Patriots. They have a conference call tomorrow. So I hope to attend. But I just, I'm happy he stuck to it. I don't know how he remembered because it's been months ago. And also, I'd like to thank Keith, too. I remember working in the street department. You know, he'd walk in the door, start getting ready for the day-to-day operations there, and he'd have to go down to the fire station. And I know it's a it's a tedious job, and he put a lot of time in it. Thanks. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. I have nothing from my standing committee other than Keith, I'd like to thank you for your years of service for with the Fire Department and
You have one.
I'm sorry.
I do have one.
Okay. But thank you for all you do for the city. I know a lot of it goes unnoticed, but driving to Genoa for wrestling practice Saturday, I could sure tell when I left Oregon and got to the Ottawa County line there, it was terrible. And our street department does such a great job. Thank you for directing them, and thank you to them as well. With that, my report's over. Mr. Mayor.
I was just going to go back to one of the comments that came up about the foundation and the and the city money contribution and where it goes. The $100,000 that we raised it up to from $82,000 is is earmarked to to pay the the salary and roll-up cost of the director. So our money is pretty much used up for the the employment of the the Economic Development Director. So the rest of the money that they spend on their operations there or whatever they choose to do with it, whether it be wise or frivolous, is money they raise from their own members. So our money is pretty much accounted for because it's spent on the director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, next Monday, Mr. Major spoke of is January 20 is Martin Luther King Day Junior. Due to this holiday, if we have a committee of the whole meeting, that meeting will occur on Tuesday, January 21 at 7:00 PM in Council Chambers. If there is no further business for Counsel, I seek a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President.
Mr. Salander.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Salander, second by Ms. Paula. This meeting is adjourned.